I know.
No, you don't.
Ten forty-three. Okay. Item eight C, discussion and consideration of order to Roosevelt County Assessor to impose property tax rates set by DFA for year 2025. We have a choice.
All right, Commissioners.
Whoa.
My team and I, we looked over the rates. We've, the, the school district columns added up correctly and the rates looked normal with only minor fluctuations. There was a decrease in value in thirty-nine out, non-res, due to the age life depreciation of the Sagamore Wind Farm, which is southwestern public service. We did send out these rates to the different test, tax district representatives for the review and we didn't hear any, hear anything back that, other than that, you know, I, I think we need to go ahead and accept these rates. And I stand for a question.
Anybody have any questions?
That was the minus ten thousand four hundred and thirty-seven?
Ten million?
Oh, ten million, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's on a page two there, or, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the Sagamore Wind, Wind Towers. They're, they're taxed ad valoremly instead of gilt. They're going to continue to depreciate every year.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item eight C.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion as second, Commissioner Chris Munoz?
Yes, yes.
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 Motion clear.
Thank you.
Eight D, Chalk Hill Stock Farm Subdivision requests for approval of summary replat of lots twenty-eight dash one and lots twenty-eight dash two of the Chalk Hill Stock Farm subdivision of Roosevelt County, Mr. Montiel.
Hello, good, good morning Commissioners, yes. Patricia and Jesus, Jesus Porter have applied for summary replats of lot twenty-eight one and twenty-eight two in that Chalk Hill subdivision. It's in portions of the west half of the, west half of section thirty-two, Township One South, range thirty-four east. This replat is in the city of Portales, three mile time jurisdiction. It's located five thousand seven hundred and six feet from the intersection of two sixty-seven and New York Drive, or half a mile south from that same intersection. Uh, the proposed summary replat contains two lots, the parcels that are being replatted are lots twenty-eight and twenty, twenty-eight one and twenty-eight two, and, um, sorry. The lot line that's being adjusted is the one in between two properties. I like my Ric Flair, so I apologize. Can't, can't go wrong with Ric Flair, but anyway, the, the lot line in the middle got, is gonna get adjusted and is gonna reconfig back into two lots. The two lots are now going to be called twenty-eight dash one A, twenty-eight dash two A. The total acreage of the two lots is two, uh, two point zero six eight acres. The minimum is zero point nine six seven, still meets the, the three quarters of an acre. The maximum is one point seven, uh, one, three acres in size, falls under the summary uh, review process. There were no adverse opinions from any of the utilities or landowners that letters got sent out to. Has been approved by City of Portales. The, the proposed summary replat has met all the rules and regulations of our county subdivision, so ask for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion as second, Commissioner Criswell?
Yes.
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 Thank you, sorry about that.
Are you good?
Okay, so item eight E, ratification approval of alcohol consumption permit for public celebration permit application by Roosevelt County General Hospital Foundation Enchantment Vineyards, Jeanette Orantia. Okay, but she's probably not here because I talked to Cassidy Self the other day. So we do these all the time, it's when they want to have a party, y'all know what it is, when you have a party out there and they want to sell alcohol. The vineyard has done that multiple times, but they have a deadline in order to file with the state and it has to be so many days with where our commission meetings fell versus when they got it, did not give them enough time. So, um, we went ahead and let them, had Drew sign for them to do it, so we need to ratify if that's okay with y'all. And furthermore, when we get through this process, if y'all don't have a problem with this, I'd like to kind of do like what the City of Portales is doing. There's no need to keep having to come before the board to ratify all of these, if they are in good standings with us and with all of the laws and all that, to cut, to have to get on the agenda to come because it doesn't always fall in that criteria. If we could let somebody sign off on it, even if it's, do you do the, the, like the marijuana ones and stuff, don't you? Who does that, is that up in the manager's office too?
What marijuana?
Like, when they do like a license or whatever?
Johnny does.
Johnny does. So I just didn't know if there was something else we could do that they didn't have to come by here, but just food for thought, but anyway.
Council agrees, I agree.
Yeah.
It doesn't need to come before the permission.
Doesn't need to come for us every time, yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, you could, uh, just do a simple resolution that delegates authority to, to planning or to the county manager. You can do it that way. That way, it's just a standing, um, recognition that you've delegated that authority.
Okay, perfect, all right. So with that, um, I would stand for a motion to ratify the approval of this permit.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, got a motion and a second to approve the alcohol consumption permit. Mr. Criswell?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight F, granting signature authority for opioid litigation and settlement, county attorney.
Madam Chair, um, you'll have a few deadlines coming up for some of the national opioid litigation where Roosevelt County can receive some, some money that's part of the settlement for those things. And, um, what, what we had originally planned was to have, ask you to delegate, um, signature authority to the county manager, but since we don't know who that's going to be necessarily in the next few weeks, my suggestion would just be to have on the, on the record in the minutes that, that the commission delegates authority to the chair. And that way, when, um, we have these settlement agreements that come up, we can just get them to you and, and you can sign them.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
Can you go into those just a little bit? I mean, I read the, I read the settlement agreement in the packet, but what's, this is a longstanding for the opioid crisis, what is this, federal money, is it pharma money?
No, Madam Chair, Commissioner Parker, there's a, and I'm not even sure how many there are, but there, there are a number of lawsuits that are more like class action lawsuits. And so there, there are several, um, they involve, uh, multiple jurisdictions, so we have states that are plaintiffs and counties that are plaintiffs and governments all around the country that are plaintiffs. And kind of the lot, the rationale for the lawsuits is that, um, the addictive quality of the opioids created opioid crises in all these, uh, in all these jurisdictions that caused, caused problems and cost money for the cities and counties and states to deal with the problems that resulted from opioid addiction. And the, uh, the amount of money is just astronomical, that, that, it's in the billions that they've been litigating over. And part of the settlements is that the counties and the cities are going to get some of the money back. And you can use the money as long, you can use the money pretty much only toward, uh, remedying, um, problems that were as a result of the opiates. So rehabilitation or, um, other programs that, uh, or even preventing it, I suppose also that too. So that's what the money would be used for once, once you got it. Does that kind of give you a broad overview of?
Yes, but this particular one said Purdue, I think?
Purdue, that's one of them.
Is that a pharmacy company, is that?
Yes, they're a pharmaceutical, uh, maker of pharmaceuticals.
Okay.
And among many, among many.
And can you give me a specific place where we in Roosevelt County would use that money?
Not yet. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I could talk with, uh, Warden Ramsey and any, I don't know if she has any, anything with Matt's that might be, um, something that the money could be used for.
I think we pledged some of it too for the.
Mental health.
Mental health.
Yeah, the new behavioral health facility.
There's some other areas. Sure. And coming up, I think the nineteenth of September is one of the, is one of the first deadlines that we have to have a, a signature approval by. Then we have a couple more coming, coming up in October. And so we'll need some signatures then so that we can, we can get some of the money for you all.
Okay. With that, I'll stand for a motion.
Make a motion and be approved.
Second.
Got a motion as second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
And that's just for the settlement agreement?
Uh, no, it's going to be going forward for, for all the opioid litigation.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. It's a motion to approve the signature.
Did we need a resolution for that?
Opioid, I don't think you have to have a resolution for it. I mean, I can get you one, but I think as long as you have it in the minutes that, that the chair has been granted authority to sign, I think you're okay.
Okay.
And then in the future, we can get a resolution, right?
We can do that, if you want, I can do that.
Sure, that's how I understood it.
Okay.
Nine A, request for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, FY twenty-five final quarter financial report, year ending June twenty twenty-five.
This is the only thing we're lacking in order to take our, um, conditional certificate to the actual certificate, they just needed the resolution signed off.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I mean.
Okay, I'll second, got a motion as second, Commissioner Criswell?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine B, request for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution relating to the proposed industrial revenue bonds entitled Roosevelt County, New Mexico taxable. Okay, taxable industrial revenue bond San Juan Mesa Repower Project Series twenty twenty-five, declaring the intent of Roosevelt County to consider the issuance of such industrial revenue bond in an aggregate principal amount up to two hundred and twenty million in connection with the proposed project located within the boundaries of Roosevelt County for the purpose of inducing San Juan Mesa Wind Project, LCC, to develop the project site and to construct and install the project, directing the county clerk to publish or arrange for publication of notice of intent to consider an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of the bonds in the newspaper of general circulation within the county and authorize the county manager to deliver a notice to the proposed project to each taxing jurisdiction within the county as required by law. That was a lot.
Good morning, Commissioners, too. Sorry, that's awfully loud. Peter, Peter Kelton again, uh, today from the Rhodey Law Firm, uh, here on behalf of Roosevelt County, representing you, uh, to, uh, discuss what's before you today with the inducement resolution for the San Juan Mesa Repower Project. We've gone through this process a, a couple of times in recent history for industrial revenue bonds for renewable energy projects. This project, as you might suspect, is a, is a wind, uh, power project as opposed to the solar farms that, uh, have more recently been in front of you. Uh, this would also be a repower of an already existing, uh, project within the county, so replacement of property, uh, wind turbines, things of that nature, to allow for, uh, the existing wind farm to continue to be able to operate, generate electricity and, uh, power the, the grid in the way that it, it already is, is doing. So, uh, with that out of the way, I, I did prepare a presentation, I don't know if, uh, it, and if, if, uh, we don't have it, I'm, I'm happy to just go off.
Sure.
And if you'd like, I did print out presentations.
Thank you.
While we're pausing for the cause, I'll ask you a question, it's probably for you, Mr. Fremont, Fremont? I'll do it right?
Just Josh.
Just Josh. So, when, I don't know if you were part of the project last time when it was done? Okay, so you guys are doing part of the, you're paid to keep the roads maintained and all that, we've got that in the con, we will have that in the agreement, correct?
Yeah, so there is a, there is a previous road use agreement, right now I have a copy of, that I would like to, basically, I think that that road use agreement, um, bring it to the county, to the county road that goes, you know, blacked up and then onto the gravel towards our end building. Do a fresh one to contemplate the construction of this project, because I think that the intent of that one was really for construction, um, but, uh, I don't know if your forms has changed, you're using a different, um, contract type for that, but yeah, that's another thing that I'm.
The reason I'm asking is because it was brought to my attention that out there, where those roads are, the agreement was that the county would, I guess, maintain and build up and everything, but y'all paid for it and we kept up with it, but that not all of the things that, it was just done, that the county just did it just enough to cover that and didn't utilize all the monies to keep the roads the way that they were supposed to be and that they were not maintained properly. And some of the landowners out there would like it to be noted that they want it to be where whatever money is set for those roads, that they're to only be used for those roads and not to be used anywhere else.
I got you.
Even if they get those done, save those to keep the maintenance, to keep whatever, because they don't feel like they got their roads maintained the way that they should have during the wind farm, so they wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page in the county with you guys on that, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, uh, again, before you today is an inducement resolution, uh, for the San Juan Mesa Repower Project, or San Juan Mesa, yeah, uh, Wind Repower Project. So, uh, next sentence. Uh, as you all know, industrial revenue bonds are, uh, an economic development tool, uh, used throughout the state of New Mexico. Primarily, uh, IRBs provide, uh, grocery receipts compensating property tax exemptions to developers, uh, in exchange for which, uh, developers agree to, uh, carry out and develop, uh, various projects that are eligible under state law and would also make certain commitments to, uh, to counties, uh, or other issuers like cities, municipalities, so on and so forth. As, as I've discussed before, uh, you know, San Juan County, Grant County, Dona Anna County, Hidalgo County, many counties throughout the, uh, the state of New Mexico have utilized IRBs to great effect. Our firm, uh, represents you, uh, Harding County, Quay County, San Juan County, Luna County, uh, in these sorts of projects, and we also represent developers, uh, on other projects where we, we don't present the, uh, the local government. So, as I've mentioned before, uh, these are not obligations of the county, uh, under no circumstances would the county be responsible for paying back the bonds or, or pledge its credit towards the repayment of the bonds. These are better conceptualized as intercompany loans where the developer is providing its own funding to develop the project, but this structure is used to, to unlock, if you will, certain tax incentives. So those tax incentives again, uh, consist of grocery receipts compensating and property tax exemptions. The developers, in exchange for those, uh, incentives, would agree to make payments in lieu of taxes, uh, maintain operations for a certain period of time, uh, enter into road use agreements, for example, things of that nature to, uh, to help in, uh, compensating the county for the tax incentives that, that would be provided. That there are flexible mechanisms for implementing all of that. Because this is a power generating, uh, project, uh, the payments in lieu of taxes that, uh, the developer would pay, would pay to the county, a portion of those, uh, payments would be shared, uh, among school districts. And all that is provided by statute. So, as to the structure, what would end up happening is that the, uh, the developer would convey its interest in the project and the project property to the county, and the county would lease back, uh, those interests to the developer. What that accomplishes is, uh, because the county would own the property, it would be exempt from property taxation, and the leaseback arrangement would also be exempt from taxation by statute. The, uh, the, another element of the, uh, the structure is that the developer would take on agent, or, or an agency relationship with the, uh, with the county, and because of that, uh, would receive certain grocery receipts and compensating tax exemptions like the county would, would ordinarily receive for purchases of, uh, personal property equipment, things of that nature. There would also be an indenture and bond purchase agreement. Bond purchase agreement would be the means by which the, uh, the developer would, uh, have an affiliate of the developer, purchase the bonds and basically enter into an intercompany loan where it provides its own funding for the project. And the indenture would secure the repayment of, of the bonds. So, again, that there's no obligation of the county to repay the bonds, this is not a debt of the county, this is not a pledging of the county's, uh, credit towards repayment of the bonds. Instead, this is, uh, that the size of the bonds is a better, uh, stated as a reflection of how much the developer anticipates spending on the project and the amount of personal property that the, uh, that the developer can purchase while receiving those grocery, grocery receipts and compensating tax exemptions. The bonds are, are sold, of course, to a, an affiliate of the company. Because of that, uh, unity of interest, uh, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the requirements that would normally be associated with a bond transaction can be abbreviated because, uh, it's not a, a sort of arms-length, uh, loan transaction, like you, you might ordinarily experience with bond transactions. So, like I mentioned before, uh, the school districts for these sorts of, uh, energy generation projects would be entitled to receive a portion of the payments in lieu of taxes that the county receives, and those payments would be divided among the school districts, all according to statute. There's not a lot of flexibility in terms of how those, those payments are allocated, but it's, uh, the legislature's, uh, best attempt at trying to find a way to, to equitably, equitably, uh, distribute those payments, uh, to various stakeholders within the county. So, another benefit of the, uh, the pilot or the payments in lieu of taxes is that, uh, the county would have greater discretion over how it allocates those funds, how it spends those funds than it might otherwise have for property tax payments. Ordinarily, you'd be restricted to, you know, uh, items approved by, uh, by, uh, the voter base, uh, and through elections. Instead, these are contractual payments and you'd have broad discretion on how you'd like to allocate those funds. So, in terms of process, uh, again, before you today is an inducement resolution. What the inducement resolution is going to accomplish is that it authorizes us to push forward with mailing notices to taxing jurisdictions within the county, so municipalities, county assessor, school districts, uh, uh, soil conservation districts, uh, basically entities that are able to levy taxes, uh, within the, uh, within the county. And all of that is, uh, trying to provide those, uh, those entities with notice that they can know that their property tax base may be affected by, by the transaction. The resolution also is the first step that the, uh, that the developer would need in order to start placing long-range, uh, purchase orders for, uh, equipment. It, this is what triggers the establishment of the agency relationship between the county and the developer, and because of that, the developer is able to secure non-taxable transaction certificates, which are what they would present to vendors so that they know that the transactions get sent from grocery receipts taxes. After the mailing of the notices, uh, we would have to wait thirty day, at least thirty days, uh, before considering an ordinance, uh, just to wait out a statutory, uh, period of time. And then there would also be a fourteen-day publication, uh, notice window that we would have to satisfy. So, the soonest that we would be able to consider an ordinance, I believe would be October twenty-first, uh, just based on, uh, regular meeting schedule. That being said, there's no obligation that you would need to consider the ordinance that quickly, the, just letting you know what the timing might be, uh, and what, what possibilities might exist on that. So, once the ordinance would be considered, uh, if you would elect to, uh, adopt an ordinance, there'd also be another thirty-day waiting period to wait out a statute of limitations for challenging the issuance of the bonds, at which point in time we would be able to proceed with closing. Again, there's no obligation that you would, uh, need to close, uh, after that thirty-day, or once that thirty-day period has run, but you would have the ability to do so without having to worry about, uh, someone bringing a suit to challenge, uh, the bonds because, uh, the statute of limitations would have expired. So, in terms of the parameters of this project, uh, based on what's been provided to us, it's a, it would be a wind farm, uh, that would, you know, your re, repower of an already existing, uh, project. Uh, it would be about ninety-four hundred acres in geographic area. There would be the ability to transfer, uh, real property interest, but more often than not, these sorts of projects, uh, are, involve, uh, leasehold interests in real property rather than, uh, fee interest. So instead of conveying land into the IRB project, it would be a conveyance of leasehold interests, which makes it a little bit, uh, more manageable from a, a property tax, a real property tax perspective. The requested size of the bond, of course, is, uh, two hundred and twenty million dollars, and the requested term is, uh, I have down here thirty years, but I think that there may be a request that it be twenty years instead. So, we've listed thirty years, but it's always possible to scale that down to be a lesser amount, generally err on the side of going on the higher end because it's always, it, you can always scale back, it's harder though to, uh, to try to push for more once the legislation has been adopted. And last, uh, the estimate for the county's portion, or Roosevelt County's portion of the project is about a hundred twen, a hundred twelve point five megawatts of generating capacity. Oftentimes, that's what's used for sizing the pilot, is that the, the amount of, uh, megawatt generating capacity for a project. So, that, that gives a, a rough idea of, you know, the, the size of the project relative to other, uh, power generating projects in the county. So, happy to answer any questions on the, uh, on the legal side, and of course, Josh is also here on the, uh, the Clearway team side to answer any project-specific questions too.
Mr. Kelton, while I enjoy your company very much, does anything change on these industrial revenue bonds besides the project terms?
They can, uh, it, it depends on the nature of the project. Lately, we've only had, uh, renewable energy projects coming through and power generating projects, but there's always the potential for manufacturing projects or similar sorts of projects that come through where the pilot terms, uh, can be different. Oftentimes, those projects. Oftentimes, with those projects, the pilot is going to be sized based on the value of the project rather than based on megawatt generating capacity. Another factor to consider is that for those sorts of projects, there's not an obligation or a statutory requirement for sharing pilots with the school district. Oftentimes, counties do allocate a portion to help hold the school district harmless in which the project is located. But it isn't a statutory requirement like for these sorts of projects. If you'd like, I'm happy to try to abbreviate.
Oh, no, 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 I was just curious. You've educated me thoroughly on this subject is the only reason I was asking.
Yeah, there is the possibility. So IRBs are interesting because there's a lot of different ways that you can structure these sorts of things if if you're inclined. More often than not, we tend to use the a similar structure across the board for similar projects just to treat everybody fairly and to try to have that sort of even handed approach across the board. But I've seen a lot of different interesting configurations for for IRBs. And because it's all a matter of contract, you've got a lot of flexibility and room for creativity.
Thank you.
Mr. Fremell, I have a question for you. You're gonna hate me talking to you. So when you guys take down these old wind turbines, what are y'all gonna actually do with them when you take them down to remove them from here? Because I know that I heard in Chavis County that there was an issue with some of the blades being put into what they described as a type of looked like a big old giant wood chipper. But they put the blades in there and that they grind them up that way. But they were doing it out in the open, and then all of that's going out into the air. And so they had to file a cease and assist order in Chavis County for them to not be doing that. Y'all are not going to be doing that in Roosevelt County, are you?
No, so part of the, you know, full scope of this project is the decommissioning aspect, right? So it's not just wind turbines, but we have to take down the old ones. And part of the contractor's scope is going to be recycling blade materials, taking those off site as well as the the tower sections. So I think there may be some cutting of the blades on site to get it to ship easier because, you know, the blades usually need to be brought in on, you know, a full section on a large truck. So taking these out, they don't need to do that. Just blades, right? So they might cut it down into smaller pieces, ship it out, but it will be, you know, I guess process is kind of something you were describing on the site.
Okay, because so how is that going to be, will that be harmful to the environment, to the people, to the cattle with the fiberglass or with anything that those are made out of going up into the air as they cut that in the open?
I'll have to get some details from our contractors and how they're going to be having safeguards in place for that because it is a good, it's a good question. And something I think has been considered, right? It's not new as far as, you know, decommissioning. There's not many projects that have been repowered, but there's multiple ones that we've done some before. So I can clarify that process, and we do have a decommissioning plan that we're specifically putting together for state property. And there'll be some discussion there.
I definitely want them to be healthy, not
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in general, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're not leaving any material on the site, period. But there's a very key on that, and that's part of our commitment, not only to our leaseholders, but
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, commissioners, that that would be something that we could integrate into the IRB documents is would be decommissioning requirements, things of that nature to to help in shoring up any concerns that you might have on that.
Okay, so that would be our next, not this one, but we do that in the future?
Yes, that that's something that we would want to integrate into the the bond documents once we start drafting those. And we can make sure that we've either got that language integrated before ordinance adoption or post ordinance adoption and then approved by you by separate resolution, whatever timing you prefer.
Thank you. Anybody else? You got something?
Well, he kind of summed up my question and then you said to go to offsite. Describe the offsite, you know, go ahead and describe offsite.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple like newer, obviously newer, but there's businesses that are now taking these blades and recycling them there. I've, I've, I know we've, our EBC contractors have relationships with those facilities, I'm not sure exactly which one that they're planning to use, but as part of their scope, it's blades go offsite to dedicate like
Thank you.
Y'all have anything?
So that was Resolution 2528?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution 202528.
Got a motion in second, Commissioner Chriswell?
Yes.
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 Motion passes to approve.
Thank you. One final item, sorry to add another piece. What we've done in the past for handling pilot negotiations and things of that nature has been appointing two commissioners to a committee to help in negotiating pilots. That way, developer team, county management team has an indication of at least two members of the commissions will as to the pilot amounts and structure. So I'm not certain if you would want to go about appointing a committee right now, but wanted to flag that for you to to consider for for the negotiation aspect.
And then I'm going to Paul Greider.
That's funny. Also, actually, with your smart aliveness, I would like to be on that because this is in my district. So when y'all decide that, when you decide what we're gonna do. Like Paul Greider and Tina.
I've been on the last two, so go ahead.
Me and Fabian got the last one of this.
Yeah, but Mr. Munoz down there is the one that's got all the skill in the renewable energy, working on a wind farm.
Yeah.
He's got all the knowledge in this department.
I'll be on it.
We did provide our proposed numbers. Should separate in this today, but yeah, however, the counter like to engage on review of that and negotiate that world. But those numbers did go across.
The most recent offer has been $2,075 per megawatt hour of generating capacity. One other item to consider is I know for the Blackwater Solar project, we had engaged with Eric Harrigan to help with providing guidance and advice as to to structuring the pilot for that transaction. He's done a lot of different renewable energy IRBs, or he's provided advice and guidance on those across the state, so he has a pretty good sense as to going rates, things of that nature. And while this is a renewable energy IRB like the solar projects, it's a wind project. Economics differ slightly. So if you would like, I'm happy to also reach out to Eric to bring him into the picture, help to get him up to speed. So happy to do that as well, if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you.
You said 2,075 per megawatt?
Yes.
Okay, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong. For Blackwater, when we were settling that deal, were we at 2,500 megawatt or 2250 a megawatt?
For both Blackwater and Sundale, it was 2250. And the the idea there was, you know, similarly situated projects in terms of both being solar, wanted to apply similar sorts of pilot rates for those.
I think was, I had my 2,500 in my mind, but I think that was what we were shooting for, but we ended up settling for 2250.
Yep, I think that, I forget exactly where they started in the negotiations, but the 2,500 did bump them up to 2250 ultimately.
They started off down there.
Come on, we'll have the, we'll have the committee.
And this is one that doesn't want to be on the committee, so you can imagine what the committee's gonna do to you.
I think projects are a little different. All projects are the same, sir.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Okay, request for approval of Resolution 2025-29, setting fees. Setting fees for what?
Logan. It's for our office. So last time y'all did y'all's resolution, our in-office credit card company, they sent us a notification saying that they were increasing our fees. So that's what this is for. So it's just for the in-office credit card company.
I move to approve. Got a motion in second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item 10A, discussion and consideration of road use agreement between Roosevelt County and Blackwater Solar Center LLC. Mr. Kelton, you're back up to the mic.
Good morning again, commissioners. It's been a while since I was last in front of you. So before you today is the road use agreement that had been approved as part of the the IRB ordinance for Blackwater Solar. I believe that we finalized the terms through a supplemental resolution to, you know, help in illustrating some of the mechanisms that we can we can utilize to give more flexibility. But before you today is the finalized version of the road use agreement, integrating things like the exhibit displaying where the the roads are that Blackwater Solar would plan to be utilizing. Those would be the roads that Blackwater Solar would be responsible for maintaining during the project. While we're not currently at the stage of closing on the full IRB transaction just yet, the developer team would nevertheless like to push forward with executing the road use agreement. Ultimately, that puts you in a better position than not having a road use agreement. Getting that into place sooner rather than later starts to impose those sorts of obligations on the developer to maintain the roads and make sure that they are in good working order. And the logic from the developer's side is that there's a hope that this will improve their their negotiating position for power purchase agreement considerations, things of that nature. And it'll help in spurring on the project to the next stages where ultimately, we would hope to to close on the IRB transaction as a whole.
Juan, have you looked over all of that and you're good with everything?
The, that's the one we went over a while back, right?
A while back, and this is the one that did not have, you know, the, well, the the most recent one, we ultimately decided not to use a road use agreement, instead opting for $5,000 payments for two years, I believe. Because it was such a small one. But this is the the one that the full road use agreement that that we had gotten approved.
This is one at H and County Line?
Yes.
And you are, you familiar with the changes to it?
Unless something's been changed since we went over it.
I think the only changes would be we now have an exhibit for where the roads are that they would be planning to use. In case that helps. So the the highlighted roads would be the roads that they would be responsible for maintaining.
Footprint that y'all showed us the last time, right?
Yep.
I didn't see it in the packet. No, I have not seen that yet.
Okay, I am happy to share.
Coffee's later than that?
I have a couple of
He comes prepared.
I tried to.
Thank you, sir.
I don't want to take yours.
Can grab the map for us.
So again, sir, you said the only changes in this are the map?
Yep, inclusion of a of a map, adding the signature blocks, things of that nature. So and the date of the agreement, nothing substantive, just getting it into shape to for for final execution.
Been since Mr. Savage was here, so if I want to look it over.
And I went over it during the negotiations with this and the road use agreement too, but I just, I want, I want to see this map.
That's the boundary of the project.
Yep.
What was in question at one time was, right, Juan? What was in question at one time was the County Road N going west? I mean, yeah, going, yeah.
South H. Or H and a half, sorry.
Eight, County Road H.
Had that was a question that Rod's going back into that there to the dairy, that was a question, but anyway.
And that's going out to 202?
202.
All the way through from 202?
Okay. Private, you know, the county wouldn't have nothing to do with that. Get there.
I think that they would plan to be using the highway as well, which is why one of the roads extends all the way to the highway.
And I'm assuming y'all made that same agreement with the landowner as well?
I do not know about the the landowners. That's been a little bit outside of my line of sight with the the developer's side. I I'm not sure. I think that there may be someone from the
But we don't have H and a half on our road plan, do we?
No.
So if we've abandoned that road, that's essentially all private anyways, H and a half.
Well, it's ours for a mile and a half.
Up to
Three, all the way to the gate, to the dairy.
Yeah, and I agree with that. This just shows it going all the way through, but I guess after our mile and a half, that's between them and the landowner. Okay.
So do we need to specify that we're only talking about our portion? Because I don't want to be say, making an agreement for somebody at private property.
Let's see.
Because on the map, it's showing private property.
Let's see.
That's a legal question, isn't it? I suppose it is.
He's a lawyer too.
I think I'm
They're both lawyers.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I forget you're a lawyer.
You're okay, you're okay.
That's a good thing, though.
Yeah, that's what I've heard, that's what I've heard, yes. No, no, no worries. So my understanding is, you know, that the agreement, even though it would highlight other roads that that, you know, the county may not have control over or own, the agreement can only extend to to what the county would would be maintaining and what the county has control over. And even if it does reflect some highlighting of land that's on privately held, it just wouldn't affect that and rather it just signifies, hey, we're we're planning on using this and we're, we've worked out they would need to work out, if they haven't already, their separate agreement with the the private landowners.
Well, I would definitely want it to be contingent on that. That if they're, if the landowner doesn't want them using theirs and they're not going to make a deal with them, I don't want them, I don't want to squeeze, you know, because they don't have any other option once we get in there with us to, but to go that route.
Well, I've spoken to the owner of that dairy, and he wants us to get more of that road, right, as you have too.
There's a half a mile, you know, he tried, tried with Rod for the county to take on that extra half mile.
So I don't think there's going to be no blowback there, but I think it switches, I'd have to look at my Onyx. I think Jordy owns a little past Scottville.
Jordy owns, and Jerry Swinson and Jordy, Jeff Jordy, are the two landowners involved.
And just because they've got the right to to use the county road does not give them the right to use private roads, that that's something that they would have to work out.
That's with the landowners, right, and we have nothing to do with that.
And if anything, it would make the landowners feel more comfortable that it's already been worked out with the county. And, you know, that that agreement does not provide the right to use roads that the county doesn't have control over.
And I agree with what Peter said, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I do, I agree.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the road use agreement between Roosevelt County and Blackwater Solar Center.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Chriswell?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Request for approval of renewable renewal of tower lease agreement between Eastern New Mexico University and Roosevelt County, Ms. Wees.
Good morning again. This is
Good morning again, this is, um, just a lease agreement, it's the same one that we entered into ten years ago. This one will still have the same term of ten years with, uh, option to renew at five.
Is there any increases?
No, everything's the same, it's just updating, um, contacts, because Eastern's had some changes and so have we.
So if we was to go into any kind of, Michael, you may be the one to answer this. The little guy that came in here earlier and talked about the towers and whatnot. Well, the guy that came in here and talked about the towers. So if we were to go into an agreement with him, would this, us being in this agreement with them for ten years affect something like that? If we chose to go that route with those, with those towers that that gentleman presented earlier?
And we're talking about.
You said five-year contract?
Yeah, this is for the repeaters located on Eastern's tower.
Okay, so it's just our repeaters on that?
Um, and I'm not sure that I've got, I've got the whole picture, are they, are they using the same tower?
We sure as hell just leased that off of Eastern.
Long time ago from Eastern for a spot on their tower for our repeaters.
So it wasn't, none of the guys there was.
So it shouldn't affect, okay.
Because it's not our tower.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Commissioner Chriswell?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Request for approval of cost of care group between Roosevelt County and Bernaleo County Youth Services, Ms. Ramsey.
Um, so this is just another, uh, county increasing their costs, the same as we've done. Our cost has increased to one-seventy-five per day, um, from the one-fifty-four. Um, they're increasing theirs for youth services for Bernaleo County from two-hundred-and-twenty-five to three-hundred.
Wow.
It's a lot, it, but it's a necessity because there's only four holding centers in the ca- in the, in the state for juveniles. We don't have that many now, but we don't want to not have them if we need them, so. We, we seldomly use them. We, we really try to house closer to us, if I can get them moved closer to like Lee County, things like that, so. We try to get that done, but if we need it, it's better to have it.
And right now, we're going to Lee County and Las, and, uh, Dona.
Las Cruces, Las Cruces, Lee County, Farmington, and Bernaleo are the only four holding centers in the state.
And we've been using Lee County and.
Well, if they're needed in different courts and they're going across the states, we need those holding areas, so.
Make a lot more sense to turn ours into a juvenile housing facility.
The state requires a lot to do that, so.
You'd be up for it.
Uh, no, I wouldn't. No.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve item ten C.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, and who wants to second that?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Chriswell and a second by Munoz. Commissioner Parker, how do you vote?
That's a lot.
It's a lot, but everybody's increasing, everybody in the state, even for adult holding, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Chriswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten D, request for ratification of contract between Roosevelt County and Paycom, Ms. Roscoe.
Because we were so late getting this on the agenda. I forgot Paul was in here.
Go, Paul.
And what is this?
This is for Paycom, this is for the payroll company that we've been discussing from time to time. Second page is probably the best page to start on.
Are they the ones that are gonna start doing it?
We hope, yes. So if you'll see about a third of the way down, it's got a monthly cost of fourteen forty-nine oh eight. That comes out to seventeen thousand seven forty, I believe. Seventeen thousand two eighty.
Annual?
That would be annual. In addition to that, on the first page, you see the total.
Sorry, what was annual?
Seventeen thousand two eighty ninety-six. On that first page, there's an initial setup fee of one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents to get everyone set up in the system. So that's where the nineteen thousand comes into play for the year, but that nineteen hundred is just a one-time setup fee. What this would do is we would send in the hours, they would take care of the checks, they would take care of paying state tax, federal tax for everyone, they would accrue vacation, they would accrue the sick, for para, for Blue Cross Blue Shield, for any of those additional programs, they would send us an upload that we would send to the, to para, to Blue Cross Blue Shield that would be correct, that we would then pay.
Did you not tell me one time about the amount of man-hours that this would take off?
Currently, I spend three to four days every two weeks doing payroll. If you break that down to hourly, you're looking between twenty and twenty-five thousand for the year. This is nineteen, nineteen-seven, I believe.
But that is, it's gonna go down to seventeen after the first.
Yes.
We won't have that initial setup, right?
Correct.
And is this locked in, or is this a yearly contract, or are they gonna?
It would be a yearly contract.
Or two, or are they gonna jump up the price next year?
I don't know that, I hadn't gone that far yet. I'm afraid that we might be missing a few deadlines of things that I'm not familiar with, and I think this is a way that we might solve that problem. Yes.
Drew?
Sir?
I don't know how everybody else feels, uh. If we're gonna farm something like this out, you already know a little bit about this here at the county. Is this something you might be interested in?
The payroll stuff? I, I mean, I think that.
That you could do it, you know, would, you know, I'd rather, you know, I guess me, I guess I'll just back up. If that's something you'd be interested in, wherever you're living, I'd be more interested in farming it out to somebody that I know versus somebody that I don't know, is what I'm, is what I'm getting at.
Well, what, what they do is they do the direct deposit, they do the tax payments, they do the nine forty-one federal filings, they do the W twos, they do, all that encompasses in what, what they're.
So is that a no, that you wouldn't be interested in something, you know, that, that?
I don't think I'd have the ability with, I mean, I don't have the, the software, all the stuff that would be required to, to do that, I mean. From what you're saying, yes, you could go to like a local CPA firm or, or bookkeeping firm or, or something like that, possibly. But, um, they just, the, the expenses would probably be higher. This is, uh, um, you know, they, they, their stuff, their uploads and all, they have experience with encode, so they can create those crosswalks and uploads that should upload smoothly into the system where there's no more errors and all. It, it's, a company like this just has the resources that smaller firms don't have, that, that make it where it's not economical for the county.
So you're not, you would be.
And it is a ratification because in order, we had to get the paper signed, because if we didn't sign it, the soonest they could start would be like after, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, the, by just signing it and getting it in, now, it was more of a.
Halloween.
And that'll help with our ten ninety-nines and all the things at the end of the year this way, right?
They'll, because that we're already in the process, they'll be able to handle all the W twos, ten ninety-nines, all that stuff.
Michael, have y'all looked over this contract?
I was just looking over it, I, I, there are a couple of issues, but I don't think they're huge. Their venue for any disputes between Roosevelt County and Paycom is in federal court in Oklahoma, which is probably something illegal, they probably can't make you do that because state statute requires venue in Roosevelt County, or Roosevelt County. I'm not seeing the termination clause or the term, and it just could be that I missed it.
I don't know, I haven't read through that, if it's in there, but when I spoke to, um, Julie Hopland at Paycom, we spoke about it being on yearly basis.
Yearly, I just didn't see it, and I could have missed it because it's small print, but other than that, it was no major, I don't think there are any major problems. I would like to know what the termination date is, but I just, let's see it.
I don't feel co- voting on it, comfortable voting on it until we have a termination clause, if that's what you say, because if we get a year down the road, and we get everything figured out upstairs like we're hoping to, we take this back over and do away with that expense.
And there's also, there's also a consequence to an early termination as well, so you'd have to be ready for that. We're willing to accept that, I suppose, if you do agree to it.
I can get Julie to give us that in writing.
Okay. And it could be, I'm just miss, just missing it up, I'm not seeing what the term of the contract is.
No, I'm kind of, I mean, I'm not opposed to this, but then again, I'd like to check into it a little bit more and.
That legal's full sign off on.
Yeah, you know, I really was, it's, I think this is pretty quick, jumping into something like this, I think it's too quick, right now. But I do understand. Very.
There's no way besides a special meeting we can vote on this once he finds out that information.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think you could, you could grant, uh, Drew the authority to, to finalize it, subject to having those questions answered, I think you could do that.
His last name's Patty.
Could we do, could we do, could we do it to you? Give you the authority with those things?
I suppose, yeah.
We could just give him the authority once, all the questions that he knows needs to be answered.
I'd like for him to report back to us.
Yeah, he will. He'll send, you just send him an email or whatever.
Sure, maybe, maybe just make it subject to approval of, of, uh, your county attorney.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, subject to approval of county attorney's advice.
Okay. And I'll second, got a motion and a second, Commissioner Chriswell? You're making my head itch.
A lot making my head itch. I vote yes.
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 Motion carries. I started to start going, dum, 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 dum. Right, you thought. Okay, eleven, media, that was it, right? Okay, uh, media communication, do we have any of that? No media in the room? Okay, with that, we are going to recess, or adjourn into executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight H two, attorney-client privileged information pertaining to threatened or pending litigation, contracts, and/or limited personnel matters as needed. Any further action necessary as a result of closed session or executive session.
Madam Chair, if I may, before, before there's a vote, if we were gonna talk about the opioid litigation, I don't think I have a whole lot to add to that, what I've already said. So having said that, um, if you still want to go into executive session.
Yeah, we still need to, yeah. Okay. Okay, with that, Commissioner Chriswell, how do you vote? Yes.
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 Motion carries, we are going into executive session.
Tina made the motion, who seconded?
Eleven forty-eight.
Did somebody second?
Roy Lee.